No, it's next, what's next?
Microphone's on.
I didn't notice it.
Microphone's on.
Yes ma'am.
Hello, welcome to Parwin City Council, April eleventh, twenty twenty four. It is six o'clock PM. We appreciate you coming out here tonight. I was saying before we started, it's a beautiful evening, so I'm grateful for those of you who are here and inside. We've asked that Kristen Robinson would give an opening prayer for this evening and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dear kind heavenly father, we meet before thee with gratitude in our hearts for the beautiful place that we live and the people that are willing to serve. Heavenly father, please watch over us and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, and just making note that our city attorney Scott Burns is on his way and so we should be seeing him arrive shortly. Does the council have any conflicts or personal interest in any of the agenda items this evening?
No.
No mayor.
Okay, thank you. And now we can move into public comment. This time is for you. If you'd like to come to the microphone and state any concerns, questions, or interests to the council, you are, you have two minutes each and that time starts now. Alright, seeing that no one is approaching or raising their hand, we'll move now into the consent portion. These items are usually approved by one motion. Item five is approval of the city council minutes from March fourteenth, twenty twenty four, and number six, approval of the warrant register for April eleventh, twenty twenty four.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent meeting items five and six.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, thank you, motion carries. Moving now from consent into action, these items do require vote. We can have discussions about those and then we will move to motions and to voting. The first item is number seven, it's discussion and vote on billboard ordinance. It's ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero seven, and we will start that conversation with Dan Jesson.
Okay, yeah, if you could. So just to remind everybody of where we're at on this, we've talked about this, hashed it over many meetings, planning zoning here, 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 and we had a work meeting last time and basically per the request of the council, created two billboard ordinances. The first one, which we'll just call option A, which would ban any new billboards within the city limits. It actually defines what a billboard is because that's pretty important if you're gonna ban something. We didn't have that anywhere in our definitions. And it then addresses the non-conforming status of any existing billboards that are in place before the ban. And the reason that's important is because there is in our non-conforming code, a paragraph in there about signs. And it was the intention, as we had kind of discussed it, that if there was an existing billboard, it would be grandfathered. But specifically in our non-conforming status or code where it talks about signs, if it's non-conforming, it has to come down after three years. So if we didn't specifically address that, even the ones that were there would have to come out after three years. And I think the intention of the council, if we were to vote on the ban, would allow any existing ones to stay there. But I did copy the part of the non-conforming status that says that if it goes into disrepair or non-use for more than a year, at that point it loses its grandfathering status. And that's pretty typical of all of our non-conforming code. It's once that used, it isn't, isn't there for more than a year, then it loses its grandfather. So, to rehash, number one, or number, option A bans them, has a definition, and deals with the non-conforming status. The second option, option B, and it does have some yellow in there because if we want to move forward with that one, we need to define some of the details of it. Option B would allow billboards along I fifteen, adjacent to I fifteen, north of exit seventy eight, south of exit seventy five. It would, it would basically restrict any new billboards to happening within that area. The other thing is that they would be prohibited within residential zoning districts, something that we had talked about, kind of batted that around. And then the question is, is, because we've, when we, when we originally discussed this and the original recommendation came from planning and zoning, they had put some guardrails on there that said, okay, we're okay with billboards, but they had some guardrails. And I didn't put all of those in here, I didn't go back into that. It's just the ones that the council had actually discussed was residential zones and how many feet to where you could put one. I mean, if you live, if you're in a residential zone and you have a commercial zone right next to you, could you put a billboard so that it's literally a shadow of the billboard, or if it's got lights on it and it's right there by somebody? So it, there's usually some sort of a, of a distance of where you could or couldn't put them. So, so that's the, number two, is they would be prohibited within a certain number of feet, which we would have to define. And if there's any other restrictions that we wanted to talk about, like, you know, some of the things that planning commission talked about was, was flashing lights, the, this total size of the sign we could restrict if we wanted to. We have been advised very astutely from legal to stay away from anything that would actually govern the content because that, now you're getting into freedom of speech issues, so we can't get into that. But we can say size, shape, flashing lights, we could, we could say that they have to have down lighting for dark skies. There's things that we could regulate, it should we choose to, but I really didn't detail any of those because I wasn't really sure where you guys wanted to go and I didn't really want to put, you know, words into your mouth, so that's what I brought you.
So with that, we can open a discussion, we could make a motion. Just gonna lean into the council to see what you'd like to do next with these options.
Hey Kelly, will you put "of" in between state and disrepair on the right side? They're left in a state of disrepair?
Yeah.
Let's hear it, Dean.
Let's hear it, John.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to think. Um, sorry. Let's see, I motion to accept option A as our new ordinance.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, and this is an ordinance, so it will be by roll call vote. We'll start with council member Burton.
David Burton, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
John Dean, aye.
Dave Harris, no.
Rochelle Toppen, aye.
Alright, and with that, the motion carries. Thank you. Now moving into action, meeting item number eight. This is vote to approve the mayor's recommendation of Troy Hoyt as an alternate, alternate for planning and zoning to replace Tony Leitzman. And I would like the motion from the council.
I'll move to approve the mayor's recommendation of Troy Hoyt as an alternate for planning and zoning to replace Tony Leizman.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, thank you, and that motion carries. Um, consideration, this is number nine, of petition to annex for South Central Holdings. The annexation will be presented by Dan Jesson.
Okay, just a reminder of the process, we're not approving an annexation, we're not really getting into the details of it. If somebody proposes to annex within the city limits, they have to, A, have a meeting with the county planner and city planner, zoning or administrator, whatever, to discuss whether it's even legal or feasible, any, any possible concerns. They then go through a process with the county that, that does mail what's called a notice of intent to all affected entities. And by entities, think taxing, school district, any entities that provide services to the area. Once they go through that and there's a certain time limit that passes, they then approach the city with a petition to annex. What that does is then you guys get the option to say, yeah, we'll look at it, or we won't look at it. Doesn't mean that we're gonna annex it, it just means we'll look at it. I think the reason why when they, when they redid the annexation process at the legislature, that they gave this option to the cities on the front end was there's a lot of time spent by, by city staff, by whoever the property owners are that are proposing to annex. And they're gonna spend money on engineering, they're gonna spend money on, on design work. And if we're not even gonna consider it, we're not even gonna look at it, then we can tell them no upfront, we're not even gonna look at it. If we're like, yeah, we'll look at it, then the next step is, it goes through a legal review. We have to make sure it's within our annexation boundaries, we have to make sure that they've followed the process up to this point. That's usually, you know, pretty simple process from the attorney's standpoint, assuming there isn't any legal issues with an annexation. Then we go through all of the noticing periods, they mail things out to the surrounding property owners. There's a protest period that certain qualified property owners can protest. If it protests, then it goes through a separate thing. Then it goes through a public hearing at planning and zoning. Then that's when it really gets down to brass tacks of, of what is the proposed zoning of this annexation? What would they like to do, density, how does it fit our master plan for traffic? And where do roads go? How does it, you know, and so planning commission looks at those things and then makes a recommendation for or against. We then get real serious about, and I would propose that we, we, we work on it the whole time, an annexation agreement of, of some of the things that we would request or require them to do if we allow them to annex. And assuming we can kind of come to some sort of an agreement on that, it then comes to the city council, which then has another public hearing and then votes on it. That's the time we vote on it. So we're at the point where we're just saying, we'll look at it or we won't look at it. Now, as far as this annexation, it is actually two parcels owned by the same party, which is South Central Holdings LLC. This is immediately west, or east, actually closer to town than, than the parcel where the new Ace Hardware is gonna be built. That's still in the county. And the, the both parcels just make up this, what you see the red square going around, that little piece there, that little, what we call a flag lot. I think that's where there is a, a house, if I'm not mistaken. It was carved out, but the owner has acquired all of that property and is proposing annexation.
So point of information, Dan, is this the parcel that's just west of Painted Hills RV, between there and the supposed Ace Hardware?
Between, is it Painted Hills? Is that the?
And that one they, yeah.
It was evil water.
Oh, it's Painted Hills.
This is the parcel between those two. It's sitting vacant, mostly vacant. There's some storage containers on it, which by the way, I've received calls about, and those storage containers are in the county obviously right now. But this will require some, some in-depth look into affrontage road, into, you know, zoning. It's actually on our, on our master plan, is zoned residential.
Was this part of the Page property?
No, it's, that's farther down. That's farther down, I believe.
Is that like a further, a prior owner?
No.
No.
No, it's South Central LLC, Holdings LLC.
Were you talking about the White House? Like the Hula House?
The white with the red and right when you're coming to town on the left.
So is it right, is it that whole property, right there?
It's that whole property, it's thirty acres.
Or they've cleared the stuff.
I was thinking that's where Ace was planted up.
No, Ace is going, so that last house across from KB.
Okay, so.
Ace is going directly behind that, north of that.
Lot, that's lot three, isn't it?
That's lot three on this map. If you zoom in, you can see where Ace is gonna go.
Okay, so I, I'm understanding where that is.
This is where that.
Like north, southeast, west, give me land.
Yeah.
North is up.
North is up.
You can see the interstate charging off there.
Okay.
Go left just a little bit. It's right there on the bottom, right below the, there's a, believe it or not, don't grab right there and just, just drag it left, there you go. So lot three is Ace.
Oh.
Lot two is where the Terribles is, has been approved. Lot one is the hotel.
And lot one is hotel, okay.
And then that, 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 that little rectangle below that APN zero five zero one is where the, that house is.
That's the house.
And then there is that White House with that like potato cellar in the front.
Yes.
They're restoring that, by the way. I don't think their intent is to tear it down. I think their intent is to actually restore it and use it.
So that's the old route of Hula Home?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, so this includes that.
Okay.
And it's all of the property around that.
Isn't that the small square in the middle?
Is the house?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not hundred percent, but I believe so.
That's what I think.
We could pull it up on the parcel viewer, but I'm pretty sure that's what it is. Either that or it's next to that and that was an old house, homestead or something.
Painted Hills is just to the north and east.
It's that big parcel to the, to the, to the east and slightly north.
So the motion is to consider, the consideration of petition to annex for South Central Holdings annexation?
So the motion would be to accept the petition and continue the process.
Okay.
If, if, if you guys wanted to move forward, that's the motion, that would be the motion.
I'll make a, a motion to move to consider the petition of annex for South Central Holdings annexation.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, thank you, the motion carries. So we'll move now into the work meeting. Item number ten is a power board committee and power cost adjustment discussion led by council member David Harris.
Alright, so basically it's like a couple of things that are involved in this, and I don't know if Jeremy would care to come up or if he cares to come up yet, but um, I guess my concern is like, all, none of the committees have the kind of power the power boards got to adjust to your rates. And I kind of think they shouldn't have that ability. So, I think it should be, when the rates change, it should be the council, you know, hold their, a recommendation committee and not setting the bill committee, I guess, you know.
Yeah, David and I have talked a little bit about this already, but I think the reason that the power board did govern this originally is due to the fact that we had multiple meetings discussing this before we brought the PCA model to the council. So they had a lot more eyes on it longer. To me, it really doesn't matter.
Yeah, it doesn't, yeah.
I'm not getting your point too, you know, but I think that's the reason that they had the, the ownership of it or better, the, the ability to steer the PCA.
Like this whole thing's obviously very new for everybody to deal with, so trying to figure out how to drive this.
Yeah, well, and Dave and I talked earlier and he brought up a good point, which, you know, his feelings are, we, he didn't express it tonight, but I'll kind of, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but he's like, you know, we, we paid for this study, we have the, the information that was provided to us and we, we kind of put it on power board or council to determine where we want to be, but the study gives us a number. And then we have the option to adjust high or low to recoup losses. So really the elephant in the room is, what do we want to do with losses that we lost last year? And if we just follow the study, then we're not looking at under collection any longer. But Dave, to Dave's point, if we do just follow the study, it does probably a better.
Yeah, it'll take longer to say maybe collect under, or the past stuff.
Yeah.
But it's like, go ahead Sharon, sorry.
The power board brought everything to the council. The council approves the rates going up and the council approved the PCA. It was not, it was not, I don't, I don't want to say not determined because it was, was determined, talked about in the power, in the power board meeting, but the council did approve it, it was not approved solely by the power board.
Yeah, and I think Dave's concern is that when we make a change, say we decide to hold the PCA at four cents to take into account under collection, that is, is the pow, right now, the power board makes that decision. Dave feels like it should be a council, as council is elected and, you know, by citizens, the power board is a volunteer board. But the reason it was is because the power board had a lot of eyes on it, they have knowledge about it, they have a background.
Yeah, like we see, we see a lot more of how the whole study is going now, so.
Yeah.
I don't know, like, I got huge problems with just overcharging everybody paying power.
Well, I, I mean, I, I don't know that it's being overcharged.
It's not really overcharged.
I think we're recoup, trying to, I mean.
Well, yeah, I understand, but.
But the point of the whole PCA was to flow with power costs, whether they be high or low.
Correct.
So if we choose to just follow the model, we gotta realize that we gotta charge citizens what the model says, whether it be one cent or whether it be six.
Correct. Exactly.
If we choose to follow the model, we need to be able to.
And if it says zero, we go to zero.
Have a backbone to put that on the citizens.
Exactly.
Because the whole model is just based off of flowing of power purchase.
Correct.
You know, and to me, I don't really care who governs. Honestly, if we follow the model.
Yeah, because like I don't see why we paid all that money to do this and then we don't go by it.
Well, and I talked to, I talked to some members of the power board and Jared's here now, but they felt like the last time we made that decision to change it, they didn't want to go exactly as the model said, which was like two point seven. They wanted to hold it at three because they kind of felt like direction from the council was to slowly recover under collection. And so the power board thought they were doing what they felt was right by the council's direction.
Yeah.
And that's why it was at three, but it makes my job easier to just follow the model. I input seventy numbers, I give that number to Judy and that goes on the bills.
Yeah.
You know, but, but really the, I think the topic at hand is under collection. We lost, I mean, it's like five hundred and fifty thousand over the three years, we're still under collected based off the model. Did that kill the power department? No, I mean, we're still functioning pretty well and we, we, we cut some things out of the budget, we.
That loss doesn't make it break the city. If it was making it towards hurting the city.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't say nothing, I'd be like, we gotta get a little more money.
Yeah, but I think the whole point of the PCA is so we don't see those losses again. So that, now we, I mean, best case scenario, we would have the PCA three years ago and it would have been, you know, half a cent here
Correct.
and then six cents when we got really bad, rather than having all these losses. So really, I think the decision denied is what we want to do with under collection. If we want to just say, hey, we've kind of recovered, like we can still move forward.
Correct.
It's not gonna, one time is maybe not ultimately detrimental to the department, multiple times would be, but we have the mechanism in place to handle that now.
Yeah.
And, and if, if we choose to just follow the spreadsheet, it doesn't really have to be governed by the power board or the council. I mean, I would bring it up in both meetings as we, maybe quarterly or whatever and say, well, here's where we are. Because all I do is get numbers from UAMPS, Judy, Hydro Production, I put them in and that gives me a number. It's not like I manipulate it, it's these.
Yeah, it is what it is.
And I can show those to everybody that wants to see, you know, so, but really I think under collection is the, is the elephant in the room. Like, do we want to continue with that or do we want to follow the spreadsheet?
Can I, can I jump in and, and I, by the way, I don't, I have, I have one bit of advice on, well, let me, let me say this first. I want to actually read the, the reason and the, and the setup of the power board for our code. It is set up a little bit different than the water board or airport board or something like that. Though, the water board explicitly says in our code that it will not be able to change rates. The power board, it doesn't say that. Not only doesn't it not say that, it actually, it sets up the power board to kind of run the department, including self-sustaining economically run the department. And I think that's the reason why the, whoever wrote this put two members of the council on the power board to make sure that it wasn't running rogue. The council, at the end of the day, can kick people off the power board, can, 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 can take over and, and run it. We know that the council's where our elected officials are and who's, who's responsible to the people. But I think they, they kind of set up the power board to, to have actually a little bit more power than most boards. Let me read what it says. So this is under chapter seven, which is power, no, which is public utilities. Chapter zero two, which is power, B, which is power board. So the, the department shall be headed, and it's talking about the power department, shall be headed by a power board which shall have exclusive jurisdiction over the department and its operations and facilities, except as may be specifically otherwise provided by ordinance. In other words, Jeremy, I'm still your boss, but the power board is your boss too, right? The power board shall be responsible for the operation of the department, the proper functioning of the department. See, our, we don't give our water board jurisdiction over, you know, our water department, their recommending body. This one is, it's got jurisdiction over the department. May make such regulations and rules as it deems necessary for the proper functioning of the department. And then this is the part, I think, actually, which gives it a little more weight. Shall see that the department operates on a self-sustaining economic basis and shall report to the mayor and city council whenever requested to do so. So it kind of gives them a bunch of power, but says, yeah, but you're on a leash, you know, by the, by the, by the city council. So, now having said that, and let me give you my advice, because I, I don't really care one way or the other. What I think I would get away from would having a rate discussion by the city council on a monthly basis. I think that that would be maybe a bad idea, just because, I mean, sometimes those take a long time, they can be very, you know, and I'm not saying this needs to be in a closed room, the power board is a, is a public meeting, anybody can go to the public meeting. But if we have to go through a rate discussion in city council every month, I think that's a bad idea. Now however, to go to Dave's point, if, and, and Jeremy's point, if we actually set it to auto-follow the PCA, then you're actually not having a discussion every month.
Correct.
And you could, you could, you could deal with it that way, or you could, you could give it to the power board and say, these are the guardrails we'd like you to stay within on how we want you to operate the PCA. But I just wouldn't want to just every, I wouldn't want to have a, a work meeting or an action meeting every month that we now decide what the PCA is gonna be. I just think that'd be bad.
Another concern.
And that's, and that, that's, that sounds good to me.
Yeah, another concern I have with that is if you're gonna address it every month is, a large driver of the PCA numbers is the UAMPS bill, which we receive on the twenty fifth of the following month, and then we get the bills out by the thirtieth or the first. The timing that you're gonna have a council meeting.
With a small window of time we have to make that decision.
Is gonna be hard, but, but putting the PCA on autopilot takes a lot of that out.
Yeah.
And you've alluded to this, but that's why in this ordinance, it, it still states like it does in all the others, it says, subject to the
Yeah.
advice, consent, and approval of the mayor and the city council.
Yep.
So, yeah, that's, I think that's the reason.
So it could go, like, like if we want to discuss it every month, that probably ought to best happen in power department. But if you guys as a council wanted to keep, to retain that, but I mean, Dave's on the count, on the power board, Sharon's on the power board, but if you wanted to make that decision here, I'd say go for it, just don't have us hash over rates every month in this room.
Sharon, are you, he keeps being ready.
I'm ready. Just a couple of things, so is the discussion about that you feel like the power board has too much?
Well, just a, it's, no, that's just a big decision for.
Absolutely.
You know.
And so.
And I, yeah, and it's like.
But to Dan's point is that we're already doing that monthly rate study or whatever, because we all meet, we all decide, and the last one was a little bit flunky because the timing, the timing was wrong.
Yeah, he was, Jared missed that one, yeah.
Yeah, Greg had a lot of information on it, you know, but, but Jeff maybe didn't and so maybe it felt like two guys really had a look on it and one guy's brand new, so he doesn't really know.
But there is two, there's two council people that are in there already, and if they want to take it back to the council, that's the way it works. Like, it's.
Well, I, I don't want anybody that's in that power board thinking I'm like, trying to tell them what to do, like, that's not what I'm trying to do. I mean, this whole thing's brand new to everybody, this whole thing's a difficult situation.
And I think the reason why is, I totally get your concern, fresh eyes, we need that, it's all good. The problem is if you, if you have the council over something like the power board, every four years, it's gonna be a terrible learning curve.
Oh yeah.
Terrible, because there's so much information, like you said, they're big decisions. You're not talking a garbage truck, you're talking a three million dollar part or a three million dollar project that all that we do is say, yeah, let's think about that, take.
Like, really, that's why that PCA thing should drive itself. That's, I mean, like, in a way, like, it takes, it takes the heat off of.
Do you remember what it was when we first initiated it? No, what the.
The percentage?
Four cents.
Yeah, the percentage.
It was six? It was like six to two orig, like it should have been at six, two, and we held it at four cents.
Six or something, yeah, something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's why we went down to four.
Which kind of.
Which I get that, but then if you go back through the whole chart, it should have been basically oh, three, eight, oh, yeah, oh, two cents, two cents, two cents, two cents.
Two and a half times.
Like, we're talking a drastic drop off and we still left it at four, so like.
Because of the under collection.
And because of the collection.
That's my whole point, that's.
So like, at what point are we gonna continue making this mass, this. Like, at what point are we gonna continue making this mass, this collection, or are we gonna call it a day?
Yeah, what point do we feel we're healthy and move on? I, I, I agree, and that's for you, that's-
And in the study, it says how much that number is.
Yeah.
So, as soon as we get to that number, we just felt like, hey, we're there.
But, but-
But do we need to get to that number? Uh, we're not unhealthy.
One of the people we paid to do the survey, they said yes.
But they're not the ones making the decision. You guys are. Of course, they feel like, as an outside consultant, like, you've lost money, you need to recoup this.
Well, yeah.
That's you all's decision.
Do you know how much four cents is, a percentage of your utility bill?
Well, four cents versus our kilo, our, our residential kilowatt hour rate would be, well, what's four cents divided by-
Thirty five point oh four.
There you go, say thirty to forty percent.
That's pretty hefty, hefty.
Yeah, but who's to say that we weren't given a really, really good deal two years ago?
Well.
And if you look at my presentation from last council, we're dead center on where we should be rate wise with a three cent PCA.
With-
But, but, here's my fight with the uh, lost money, is like, citizens, everyone that pays the power bills already paid that money. It's like, so now we're paying it back again. We're double dipping on it in my book. And I know what you're gonna say about it, but it's like, it, it's, how did that money get in the power board from the, or in the, in the power bank account? From the people that pay the power bills. So we had the money, you know, Parowan is a business, Parowan lost money. Sometimes you lose money, you know?
Yeah, like as a business owner, you write it off as a bad bet.
And making everybody pay it again, is the way I look at it.
Well, I, I don't-
And that's the over collection part. I get the PCA, it, we can't lose money selling power, you know?
Obviously, I don't agree with everybody's paying it again, because I mean, our, our normal rate was based off of a typical fifty to eighty thousand dollar UAMPS bill. And our December bill was two hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and thirty. So, that's a huge loss, so that's what we were looking at. And, but now the PCA is in place to where that shouldn't happen again.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, I get your point, and I, and I, I, I just want direction.
How the power cost was gonna fluctuate and caught, you know, where it spiked so rapidly. I mean, that caught everybody.
Exactly. And now this vehicle is in place to, to handle that if that happens again. Hopefully, it doesn't, you know? I mean, power costs have trended down, but we're still not where we were two and a half years ago, when we were having seventy, eighty thousand power bills. Our last power bill was like a hundred and eight.
Let me just add that, as far as the rate goes, it, it, our problem was, is our study, our power rate study, we were way behind. Like, we should, we use, a power company like us, we should do it every three to five years.
Oh yeah.
Well, it had been twelve, and then it'd been eight, and then it'd been, well, we finally figured out, oh yeah, this isn't gonna work, so. That's, a lot of that came from that. A lot of the, the bumping up last year, not only that it's the rate spike, obviously, but um-
But it's also not the customer's fault.
No, absolutely not.
Right, but they are the ones using the power that we're buying at higher rates, you know?
Still not their fault, if their rates weren't adjusted on the way.
Or the power department's either.
Not the cities either.
It is the city's fault.
No, it's, it's, it's uh, it's uh-
City should have checked.
Lack of coal, it's uh, I mean-
Well, I'm saying, yeah, obviously not that, but it's still, we should have checked this. It should have been checked.
Well, we were, I mean, I was, I wa- I watched that bill monthly, but the time it takes to get approval to do a study through power board, then approve through council, give them the mass amounts of information that they want, takes months to implement. And so, I mean, there's like-
Oh yeah.
We had this two years ago, that, that we would've just kicked it on to the customers and we'd have been sitting pretty. And we have it in place now. So I, I mean, I get your point of, let's follow, because while you have it-
I think we need to follow it.
Yeah, I mean-
Our, we have it, let's do it.
It's all about under collection. If you wanna address under collection or losses, then we need to have the PCA adjust on decisions of what's gonna, if, if we wanna forget losses, follow the spreadsheet, we have the vehicle in place to do that. And things move forward and we, we are ready to absorb these, if we have them.
Correct.
Next time, you know, and, and honestly, I, I mean, uh, talking to Chris Lund that developed the study, who also did our rate study. Um, he, you know, if we always have like a four cent PCA, what would probably be best is to just raise our regular rate. Say we go up one and a half to where that gives us a two cent PCA or whatever it be, and that way, um, it's collecting the same, you know, as far as revenue. But you just don't see the PCA dollar as much, you know, it'd be the, it's, it's uh, the same comparison, same dollar figure, but.
Think, which animal do you want?
So really, I think it's just under collection. It, it, that's what drives the increase of the PCA ver- off of the spreadsheet, so.
So, and again, I told you that I, I really don't care. I just want something that works. Would you, Dave, uh, sorry, Dave, I gotta be careful. Councilman Harris, so that, Councilman Burton doesn't get confused, um, would you uh, be comfortable leaving the power board in charge of the PCA if they, if they are also given the direction to just strictly follow it? Or, or would you rather like, really like to have it in this body and then make the motion to strictly follow it, or what, what would you like?
Them doing it as long as we, to me, we follow the chart.
We, we have the vehicle, we have the spreadsheet.
But we paid all that money to do it, let's, let's do what it's supposed to do.
I, I just want direction and I wanna make sure that my department doesn't continue to lose money.
Right, exactly.
My job, that's what I'm here, you know, but I'm good-
And you do a great job, so.
And I think following it, um, one of the things that could be considered, um, we could go to a twelve month smoothing average, rather than a six month smoothing average. The whole reason why we're not following it right now, I wanna remind everybody why we're not following it exactly. It was because when we very first calculated it, it was six point two.
Yeah, I just-
Yeah, you're trying to ease it a little.
And the power board was like, that's gonna be, that's gonna hit hard. So let's not fully implement it. So the first month we implemented it, we actually restrained it. But that actually dug us in a deeper hole, and so then, and then the fix was to go longer. So I'm saying, if we follow it, we gotta go, if we follow it when it's low, we follow it when it's high, cause if you just, every time it goes high, you restrict it. And then you let it go when it's gonna go low again, then I'll, then you're just gonna financially start to impact the power company and then there's no point in having it if it doesn't, if it isn't allowed to work. So, if, if we are gonna let it flow, then it, we just need to let it flow, and if it's five, but I, I really don't think we're gonna see those kind of spikes. That was kind of an anomaly, um, one that we were all reacting to the best we could, but I really don't think it's gonna really flow a lot.
Really, last, I think, August and September were our two cheapest power bills from UAMPS last year, and I think probably June, July were next, so we're getting into the better, you know, the next six months, I think, are gonna be, I mean, but the problem is right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The PCA is, the PCA is based off the previous six months, which are high, so we may see a three point three or a three and a half the next month, but then as those higher bills kick off with a lower bill, that-
It'll come back down.
Correct.
So, you know.
So, but, but, but to Jeremy's original point, to make the decision to follow it, if that's the way that we wanted to go, means that you are forever walking away from the under collection, which is your point, you're okay with. Financially, it's not gonna cripple the power company. It's, we take that blow and we move on, um, and, but we would, we would write that off essentially, if you guys are comfortable with that. That's what we would have to do if we just say we're gonna stick with it as of today, cause as of right now, we're still trying to collect that past under collection, so. Just be clear that that's what we're talking about. That's kind of the issue that you said is the element, elephant in the room.
Yeah, and if the PCA says it should be six point three cents, you are okay with putting that back on the customers, which-
And when it says it's one then-
Thirty five percent, six point three is probably sixty five percent.
It may go to zero.
Can't you just top it at four percent?
You could, but then you're losing money. Your power department is becoming crippled.
Yeah, you can't.
That's what we did, and that's kinda why we're in the boat we're at, because we didn't collect. And so, all this is a, as a scenario, uh, comparison. Santa Clara had a PCA in place years ago. Their March, not this March, last March, twenty twenty three, PCA was seven point eight cents. They kicked that to their customers. Now they're under a penny on their PCA, but they chose to bite the bullet up front and-
Yeah, it could be hurt one month and be great the next, you know, like, you, you don't know.
So, it's just as long as we're good with passing it on when it's low, we pass it on when it's high, where it doesn't work.
A twelve month P- PCA, it's gonna flatten it a little more, which is kind of what we're doing. It's just that we're kinda manually stretching out our six month.
Yeah.
We're like overriding what the model says.
But if you take it twelve-
We could do a twelve month, and then if you had a spike, it's gonna spread that spike out over a longer time.
But if you do start a twelve month right now, your PCA would be higher next month than a six month, because of your previous six months. Power bills, power purchase costs were higher.
And, and I just don't feel it's, it's right for the city to, to be out that money.
If this would cripple the city and hurt the city, I'd be all for saying, yeah, we gotta pay it back, but it's not gonna hurt it at all.
Anybody else have a comment on that?
Have we done a study? Is the, how bad, I mean, it will hurt the city if we took the law off?
Dan is pretty in tune with the finances. I mean, if you look at last year's audit, um, for the power department, I think that was probably the only year in the history of the power department that we were negative net cash or whatever term they use.
Five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand write-off, isn't it?
It's, yeah, it's like five ninety right now.
And, and, and write-off, I don't wanna use that word because that's a very specific accounting term.
Right.
Just colloquially, I can never say that word. It is a colloquialism. I cannot say it, I apologize. We are writing it off, cause we're forgetting it. We're not using it as a tax write-off, but the number is like six hundred thousand is where we still sit on that post-collection. The, as far as the way the, the year ended up, it was the first year that the power company, cause usually, in, in, in an enterprise one, you want enterprise fund, you want to make a certain amount of money every year, um, especially when your ci- city is growing and you have more assets that you have to maybe replace, you know, you gotta have good fund balances and things like that. If we were completely paid off all of our debt and all of that stuff, then maybe we don't wanna keep increasing fund balances. And maybe at that point, we would look to flatten everything. Um, but we still have a lot of debt. Power company has a lot of debt. We need to have healthy cash reserves. I did the presentation, remember I talked about our bond rating? We're about like a B bond rating. We're not at an A. Um, this will not take us to a C or a junk, C isn't a bond rating, you know what I mean? Junk bond status, you know, triple B or whatever. But um, but we could absorb that loss, cause essentially, with the loss already happened, if you wanna know where the power company was with the loss, just look at the financial statements, because they ended June of twenty twenty three. Power company is still okay, and we did see that little bit of a dip in its. The reason why it was a little bit, and it's not this massive amount, because it's, what would have happened had this not happened, the power company would have made X amount of money. The difference between what we would have made and what we did make is the difference. It's just that we didn't, it didn't have net negative, you know, net income of five hundred thousand. It had negative income of like a hundred thousand. Well, we would have probably made four hundred thousand last year, otherwise, or five hundred thousand, whatever the number is. But we can absorb it if you wanted to. Um, it's just staring the, um, staring the company, right?
Just, well, I think the mechanism's still there that, like, that, you know, it's subject to their advice and consent, approval of the city council. And we, I think the consensus of the city council is to do this gradually, not hit the citizens real heavy, but to be conservative and to try and, you know, make it so it wasn't quite so impactful, and I think that's, I think is what the consensus is.
And that's why we brought it down to three?
Right, we low, yeah, cause it was proposed six, whatever.
Yeah.
And then-
And then a few months ago, power board decided to lower it from four to three, because the spreadsheet was saying three point seven.
Yeah.
Now it's looking at three, three point three-ish, when I put my numbers in, but like, but the-
But like, say, less than, say, half a cent is a lot of money to-
To a large user.
A large user.
It is.
The store, my shop.
Most businesses, yeah.
Yeah, all those big shops, like, that half a cent is a ton of money, yeah.
Those business users didn't use so much, our power bill from UAMPS would be lower too, but, but, yes, it is a, it's a big deal.
Over collecting, so.
It's a big deal, you know?
We throw around cents like it's not thousands to some people. It's a lot of money.
Mason coming to our council on the twenty fifth, is that gonna be something that he could contribute to this discussion with his perspective and advisement on that? Because I know we talked about, you know, making a one percent adjustment would, it's kind of a hybrid model. Would that allow us to continue to recoup some of the loss? Or either way, even if we made the one percent adjustment and then followed the chart, would we still be potentially, you know, riding the entire wealth? Moving, moving past what is behind us?
So I think Mason's biggest, Mason's the CEO of UAMPS, who will be here in two weeks, but he, he's gonna talk more on, on our purchase costs from UAMPS and our projects that we're in. He's not gonna know Parowan City's financials. He's, I mean, he's gonna know that he's, he, his company has sent pretty large power bills to us, to most of Utahns, you know, and he doesn't like that either. But that's not all in their control either, but-
And they don't wanna get into individual city.
Right, but he will be able to talk about upcoming projects where Parowan is currently and what has caused our increases, uh, you know, but
Okay, so not only to add to this conversation.
Gonna be out of that realm, but, yeah. Anything else?
Will you take it to what?
It's a work meeting, so if, if you wanted to make a motion to bring something, an action item forward, we could bring it to the next one, or, no, not a motion. If you add, wanted to say, hey, will you please put this on the next one, then we could, um, if, if, if the council wanted to, but. So I guess, yeah, there's nothing to take action on. My, my bad. Thanks, Kelly, for-
Good discussion, thank you.
She keeps, she keeps me good.
Appreciate you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you. I do wanna bring it to an action meeting.
Okay, for the twenty fifth or for the?
You can do, yeah.
Or after the next?
Let's go after the twenty fifth, so we can see the next bill.
So the, the first meeting in May? Okay. All right, moving now to item number eleven on the work meeting. This is the short term rental code consideration. Um, and Dan?
Okay, I got this. This is actually gonna be a short item. Um, the intent with this is to, um, start the process, um, if we, if we start the process to look at adjusting our code, um, it allows us to basically put a six month stay on, on, on any, anything that comes in, because we're looking at it. Basically, what we're, our intention is, the, the, the planning commission wants to look at this, um, and I will explain why, what's going on. Um, and anything that comes in, in the meantime, we can say, you gotta press the pause button until planning commission makes a recommendation, comes back to city council, and we make a decision. We can only put a moratorium on these things while we're, while we're looking at our code for six months, but we can do that. The reason why, um, it was suggested that we actually do this and put this moratorium on is because we are seeing a lot of new short term rentals. Um, right now, we don't have any short term rental code. It's basically if somebody wants to operate a, um, a, a business in their house, and it happens to be a short term rental, as long as they follow our code, I approve it. We don't have anybody protesting. If we have a protest, just like any home based business, it comes to planning commission, and then they make a judgment call. As long as there's no protest, it's administrative and I grant it. I've been granting, um, I'd say maybe one a month. Eight proposed? That are licensed. We have a lot more than eight out there, but we have eight that, since we, since we passed the TRT and we said that you have to get a business license, if you're gonna do this, um, we have eight. And what, how long ago did we do that? So, not quite once a month, we've been approving new short term rentals. Um, we're a small town. You can do the math. I, you know, I, I think at one point, the uh, county TRT, uh, the tourism told us how many, how many short term rentals we have. I'm not saying short term rentals are good or short term rentals are bad. I'm saying that if we're going to do any regulation, we need to do it now, because once you have a whole bunch of people that are now invested in short term rentals, that's not the time to go in and say, you can't do it. They've already put money, they've got mortgages that are, that are backed by these. It gets really hard to then, um, pull the curtain out, or the, the rug out from under some, of somebody who's running a business. That's just not really fair. So if we're gonna do something, we should do it now, and we'll leave the discussion of what should be done or shouldn't be done to the process. We'll have a public hearing in planning commission after they've talked about it for some time. It'll come back to city council. I do expect this to be controversial. You're gonna have strong opinions on both sides, you know, from property rights to businesses to at what point is it eating into home affordability if you take your, some of your rental properties and they, they're turning into a business? Um, cities, uh, we were gonna look at this really strong a while back, and our legal advice at the time, which was good advice, was this thing hasn't been litigated, cities are getting sued, just stay away with, away from it until there's some case law, until there's some cities that have, that have gone through litigation and they've, they've kind of come up with some policies that will, that will hold if they want to. Um, some cities that are, that are either ret- that are either, um, oh, what do you wanna call it? Resort communities or shoulder communities to resort communities, um, it's been like a massive issue. Here it hasn't been that massive issue yet, but I think we're slowly getting to the point where, um, it could become an issue where all of a sudden, all the rentals in town are, are, um, short term rentals. There's not really any long term rentals. We don't have a lot of um, affordable housing in Parowan. Um, we don't have very many rentals even available right now, and so if we're gonna have workers- And so if we're going to have workers and an economy and stuff, they've got to have a place to live. And yet, at the same time, if somebody wants to do what they want with their property and have, and have an investment and all that stuff, you can see why there's, why there's different, um, views on this thing. So we'll talk about it. Planning commission will look at it. We'll come back. Um, I'm not going to really get into the details any more than that, but, um, there's lots of ideas. Do you limit number to, to certain radius so you don't, you don't get too many too close to each other? So a whole subdivision doesn't become rentals? Do you say there's only so many that are allowed in the city, first come, first served? Do you say it's wide open? Do you say that they have to be an owner occupier? You know, that way you don't have, there's a lot of corporations, large corporations. They'll just buy a house, put it into the system and a, a property management company takes it and it just becomes a rental. That's a house that comes off the market for a family to live in because it's now that thing. Do you want to say, all right, we, we want the residents of Parowan to be able to rent out a room or rent out their basement, but we feel a little differently about corporations? Or, you know, there's all these different kinds of things that we can and can't do. We have a lot of good code that we can borrow from other cities that have successfully done this. Um, it's going to come down to your principles and, and weighing these, 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 you know, conflicting interests. So anyways, the only reason I'm putting it on the agenda is so that we can officially let planning commission, direct planning commission to take a big swing at it. While they're discussing this, they will also be discussing ADU code. ADU stands for additional dwelling unit.
I'm sorry.
When you think about a mother-in-law apartment, our house, um, we've had a lot of requests right now in the housing market that we're in. People want to build a little casita behind their house. People want to have another residential unit on their property. Um, even in an R-two zone, you can't put a second residential unit. You can build a duplex, one building, but you can't have two separate residential units. We have gone the rounds. This is exactly what our code reads. So the question is, is say in an R-two zone, do we want to be able to let somebody build a casita behind their house? That's the density that's, that's contemplated, but our code won't allow it. What about in, um, we're already forced by new state law to do addition, um, internal additional dwelling units. If you want to convert your garage to an apartment, you can do it. Utah law is forcing us to do that. Planning commission's been working through that code for three, four months. Um, we want to make sure our code is compliant with state code. They do allow us to regulate that within certain bounds and we're working through that. We're almost done with the definitions and then we're going to get into, of the ten things that we can regulate, what do we want to regulate or not? That'll come to you shortly. But that's internal dwelling units, additional dwelling units. We, as we're talking about short-term rentals, we realize we've got to talk about additional dwelling units outside the home. Um, and, and we do get a lot of requests in planning, zoning, people that, that want to either, um, have their kids live there, their, their mother who's now widower, a widow, live there, or they want to turn, they want a rental property or something like that. Where and under what circumstance would we be willing to allow it? We're going to have these two conversations concurrently, additional dwelling units and short-term rentals.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
So when you're doing, when we're talking about the additional dwelling units, where does the water portion of that come?
That's a really great question that has to be answered.
Because you're essentially adding a whole new.
Yep.
Living space.
Yep.
Are they going to be?
I'll tell you the way that we do it, the way that we've looked at it up to this point. Let's say somebody puts in a garage and it's a separate building because the question is, wait a minute, at what point do we charge a second connection or a impact fee for that? And the way the city has looked at it, that if you're going to connect to the, to the house's utilities and you're not going to upsize anything, you're within the connection, a three-quarter inch connection or a one-inch connection. You haven't actually, you might be using more, but that's no difference than a big house to a small house. Uh, once you tap onto the main with a separate connection, a separate lateral, a separate meter, at that point, we're going to charge it. That's the way we've been doing it now, but that's just administrative because that's the only fair way that I could come up with to do it. If you're going to, if you're going to have a second connection to the power with another transformer, we're going to charge you as though it's a new house, even if it's just a barn, right? But when it comes to additional dwelling units, it absolutely, we should discuss that. What about setbacks? Can you only do it in the backyard? Can you do them side by side? What about the size of the yard? Like, that's all the stuff that, that I know Larry is chomping at the bit to get through. It's not super easy.
Good job, Larry. I do not envy you.
So that's why it's there. Any other questions? We just wanted to kind of basically hit the pause button while we talk about it. Um, we want to have a good, robust public discussion as well. And, and, and there will be, um, people that are happy with the result at the end and people that aren't. Um, but if we have a good process, then we can come up with some good code. You have some places like Santa Clara, um, you know, right up against Zion where they're like, they're like, we're at crisis stage. They talk about it all the time, the mayors and everybody. They're like, we're at crisis stage. We, the state, you need to do something about this. So we hope to basically come up with something that works for us with our brand of how we want it to look before the decision has been made for us because we didn't do anything at all. So that's what we wanted to do.
All right.
Okay.
And with that, we'll move on. So be thinking about those things. Um, and we will get, you know, obviously a communication from the community and that's what we're asking for as well. Um, into item number thir-, uh, twelve. It's the Parowan City Background Check Policy. Dan Justin and Chief Adams are here to talk about that.
Okay, so we don't actually have a policy about background checks. Um, and we need to have one if we're going to do background checks. I think most everybody would agree that it's a good idea to do background checks. Maybe not of every employee, but, but employees, um, um, we have on here that we're going to do background checks um, for police officers, coaches, crossing guards, pool employees, think showers and stuff like that, firefighters, treasurer, recorder, and human resources director. The reason why they're getting picked on is because they handle sensitive, they're handling social security numbers, they're handling credit card numbers, they're handling, um, things like that. We don't want to have somebody that they look great and, and we think they're the greatest person ever and we know them, but guess what? Twenty years ago, they were stealing money in Rhode Island and now they're here and they rehab their image. But we want to know that they were doing that. Or if they ha, if they're on the, uh, sexual registry or if they are, you know, they're a pyro and they're, they're wanting to be on our police department or our fire department. Or they have a problem with pills and now they're going into people's homes to, 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 to help with the elderly to lift somebody and they were walking right past, you know, medicine cabinets. There's a lot of reasons why we want to, we want to know. Not everybody needs to be background checked. But we, we, when we were talking about it, um, I, um, we said, well, what is our policy? And we actually didn't have one. Um, and we have been doing background checks for different reasons, but we didn't have a policy and we didn't have when we do it and how we do it. So this, I don't know if everybody had a chance to read it. I can go through it if you want. But this was, um, like all good things, um, we found, um, a, a policy and we, we made it work for Parowan that, for our circumstances and all of that stuff. Um, Kelly actually found the basis that started this one was something we got from Davis County. We took all of the things out that didn't apply at all to us. Um, we, we really made it more, deal with the way, the process that we actually follow. And I'll just talk you through the process. Basically, we have our, our police department, uh, we have a new hire. We say, hey, can you guys look into this? Do you do a criminal background check? You'll see on here that this says criminal records, drug testing, fingerprinting, credit report, verification of application information, driving records, reference. We don't do all of that right now, but this allows us to do as, as much of that as we feel we need to. At a minimum, we want to do a criminal background check. We want to see, do they have misdemeanors? Do they have felonies? Do they, what have they done? Um, that, that may be actually a concerning thing. We do random drug testing all the time on our employees, on certain employees, um, more so than others as we're recommended to. And everybody that gets hired has to go through a drug test. So to some degree, we're going to do more of this. To other degrees, we're going to do less. It, in order to become the treasurer, you have to literally have a bond. Uh, the, the, the city pays for a, um, and a, what do they call it? Uh, not an indemnity bond. There's a specific name for it that we have to have. And so if they steal a bunch of money, um, because they're in a position maybe they could, then it actually protects the city and the city's citizens from that. So depending on the job, there's, there's, this looks a little bit differently. But anyways, so after the police department does that, they're going to fill out a form that says, yep, they passed. Um, human resources, um, the, the department that's hiring won't necessarily see all of the background. The police department will just know, oh, there's a concern with this thing. The concerns that can be considered, this is the criteria under five, number of convictions, severity of convictions. I mean, if, if somebody was smoking a cigarette when they were only sixteen, does that mean that they can't ever work for the police department? Would you ever get any officers if they never had any misdemeanors or speeding tickets?
Infractions, no for sure, and even small misdemeanors.
Yeah. Uh, length of time. There are some things that happen and if there's a long enough length of time, we're still going to go ahead and hire them. Um, you know, I think that if somebody, um, wanted to, wanted to work around children or they wanted, that we wouldn't want anything ever in, of certain things to be on there. Or, or if they had a problem, you know, committing fraud and stealing money, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter how long it is. We're never going to hire them to be our treasurer, right? Other things, it's like, okay, when they were juvenile, they did some boneheaded stuff and now they're thirty and they don't have anything like that since, we'd probably approve it, right? That's why length of conviction is important. Addy, jump in at any time. I'm just trying to get through this stuff, so.
Oh, you're good.
Security sensitivity of the position. I think I've talked about that. Relation between the job duties of position and the nature of the conviction, right? That's important. Preservation of the safety and security of the city, its citizens, employees, and property and any other factors mandated by state or federal state, state law. So anyways, that's pretty much the process. We'll do a background check. If everything is good, they fill out a form and give it to Kelly, who puts it in the personnel file. If there is a problem, at that point, it gets stopped and it gets reviewed. Um, police chief, human resources, the department head that's looking at it, probably myself, and say, wait, is this a problem? And at that point, we would then turn down the application. Um, and it will do this for volunteers too, if they're in, one of those volunteers. And the last thing I wanted to say is if, at any given time, and this is in the policy, if they say, no, 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 you're not authorized to give me a background check, we say, okay, that's, that's totally fine, but you can't have the position, right? This gives, this protects us for denying somebody. They can't sue us. Um, and also if the person demands a copy of their background check, then they can get a copy of it. And that's in state law under background checks.
I'm surprised we don't have one to begin with.
A policy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Me too.
I mean, really.
Yeah. We, we have always done them on our officers and they're, they're very in-depth. It'll be as in-depth as this policy is plus. But yeah, I was, I was surprised to hear we didn't either.
It's one of those things that we've been, we've been carrying on as though we had a policy. We just didn't actually have one.
We've done, we've done drug tests on all the new hires.
That's what I said. They've implemented it, just haven't had the policy.
We've never, we've never checked backgrounds, criminal backgrounds or, and, and you're not going to catch everything because not everyone has a criminal background that's doing bad things. But it's a little bit safety for the city.
It, it also protects us from lawsuits from an employee. It protects us from lawsuits from anybody on the outside that said you guys didn't do your due diligence. Um, you didn't, you didn't background check this person and now they've, in their official role, did X, Y, Z and now I'm going to sue the city.
All right. Any questions from the council?
No.
So we'll bring.
I just think it's a need. We need to get it implemented.
Yeah, let's bring it back. So bring it back on the twenty-fifth, the agenda, Kelly?
Yes.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for your work on that.
Thanks, Annie.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to hop over to Zoom. And so the reason this is on the agenda is we're talking a lot about better communication through our website and, um, citizen engagement tools and things like that. We actually have legislation that's requiring us to make adjustments to what we provide on our website that we don't currently have a tool to provide. Um, we had a call today from Jones and DeMille. They've kind of tried to fill that gap for cities with a product. Um, but it really is just going to kind of be a patch to what we already have. So right now, we have Civic Plus, um, the tool from Jones and DeMille is Civic Pro. Um, I don't know if you want to say what needs to happen by September, October that we need to accomplish, but we're, more and more, we're, we're kind of seeing a deficit in the tool that we have with what we have to follow, um, legislation and things. And then also a deficit in, in, in communication with the community. And so as this process is kind of unfolding, uh, we had that one group. We had a presentation from Poly Platform. I just kind of got the beat from the council. That majority council, I think three of you at least, maybe a couple other of you just mentioned, you know, didn't even, even say anything, but three of you did say, that was neat. I liked that. So I thought, you know, when I was approached by, um, Thrill Share, which is kind of a fun name, right? And Matt Sloan, I was like, this product kind of does everything we need to do. And then from a pricing perspective, it actually came in about where we were and maybe even a little less than where we are with the product we have now. So he's here to give us a presentation. Um, he's very personable, but like most fun people, he does like to talk. So I told him to keep it short, that just hit the high points and to talk about his clients in Utah because Utah likes to see Utah. But, um, he'll give us an introduction to what he has to offer us for a communication platform for our residents and then also web tools for our city.
Hey, thanks, thanks much, Molly. And, um, I'm Sloan and very excited to, uh, to share real share with you guys today and, um, appreciate the, the time this evening to, um, help, allow us a little bit of micro questions at the end too. But, uh, certainly I don't mistake to, to jump in kind of throughout.
Oh, I forgot to mention Anna. So I talked to Sloan first and then Anna's been struggling a bit with the rec program and expanding that. So she spent some time with Sloan as well. So they went back and forth with what she needed to carry out her job responsibilities. And after, I said, I think this is good, you know, what do you think? And then she's like, I think it's good too. And she's also been trying to kind of figure out how to use what we have and has been hitting some roadblocks. So I forgot to mention that it's been through two of our, you know, through me and then also through our rec director. I forgot about you and Anna meeting, so that was good. Anyway, go ahead.
And I've got some great, uh, ideas and applications and to, um, and, uh, you know, really starting today, we've had over two thousand of these conversations with city leadership. Oh, and, you know, we keep hearing, it's dangerous, okay? There's a lot of competition that you're facing, other communities face. Right? It's been more important than ever to get your message out there, to stand out for the community and to engage with those current residents. We think about communication. There's really two sides to that. Of the first one being for the community, right? But basically, we're, they're all asking for more, better information, more information. But we're inundated with information that there's so many platforms out there. How do we streamline that for them? Some of our other side, those are contributors, right? City leaders all wearing mini hats and trying to keep up with everything. How do we get those positive stories and important updates out there and make it easy for them? Want to start with that power side, that, that community side. Trying to think about where we're receiving information every day, where we live and breathe. It's on a mobile device, right? Now I pray the idea there, something that you guys are talking about currently. Right? What do we do with that? Can I go ahead and share my screen here with you?
Okay, let me, it probably, now you can.
Yeah, Dan, can you allow, uh, screen share for me?
Yeah, I just clicked it on so that you can, but when you first started, you couldn't.
Rocking out. That would have been as fun if I had to show you guys what your grandma. No, and is that screen from the through okay for everybody?
Mm-hmm, we can see it. Thanks.
And, uh, that's not a revolutionary idea that I'm sharing with you all, everybody on their mobile device. One of the chief of people better providing better source of information. Our first thought is to get a mobile app. There's a lot of providers that can build that for you. And this first one I want to share, it's not an app that we built, but starts with a typical event from a common provider, right? All the right intentions the community has here, but I really want to look at that experience if I'm not a big. I'm a resident that's been wanting to check out pickleball and navigate through that calendar. And I'm up here. The developer here has just taken a shortcut and I've been redirected out to Alexa. Especially these days with our attention span of two or three seconds online. I'm closer to this point. I'm probably never going to come try to use this app again. Really get one chance, the first impression is so important. It's where we really take a different approach and start here with a mobile strategy. How we really meet our audience where they are and get them to actually come and visit in that everyday. This is the app we built for Cedar Hills. This is the app we built for Cedar Hills, uh, there in Tucson. And now, I'm in San Jose, I have something like my own calendar, right here on the front page. And I know that this calendar is a unique, every community has a lot of them. We're gonna, the app here, it's really important to get all those little things, right? One of those big search items, we need a city event coming up for the day. But now, I can expand from there, and text that we've been there, and put that over in my neighbor, we're just talking about going for a couple of weeks. And have a council meeting to my calendar, and can even open up directions and maps, all right here on my phone. Provide that great experience, and now, we'll know where they can come to check out, and see what's going on in the community, we have a source of truth here. Certainly not just about, on a minute calendar, we want that to be the one stop shop for your community. That can be for a document, and one of the, find that form that I needed, uh, minutes and agendas, I have those all right here, or I can navigate to in just a click. And now, with that contact that I need to reach out to, I'm away from the parks department, my favorite contact in the city, it's now just in a click, all right here. Looks pretty easy so far. This is Brandon City that we also work with, and, you know, you can have that great experience, and it's easy to find an event, a contact, submit a form, your body can come back. Now you start to have a habit around using the app every day, but the most exciting element here is this live feed. Looks kind of like a social media feed, it feels familiar, easy to scroll. There's no likes and comments section there in the live feed, and that's my design. Just your dedicated message to the community, for positive stories, for important updates, and not that one of Facebook algorithms, it's almost in between a political rant and this week's favorite cat video. And that was great things, are all right here, at the click, or putting it in the app that I'm coming to visit every day, I've seen the positive stories, our work that we've been doing in the community, uh, things that I wanna share. We can have this fantastic looking app, a really great experience, something every community member would be coming to use, but if it's not really easy for the team to manage, then we've got a giant mess, right? And that's where I'll share Thrill Share, which is the backend of the platform, the management piece, and we think of it as the one top shop on the other side, so now when you come in to make that visit, you can upload images here, and it's just one click on the publish button, now update all of your communications platforms to the same. So any social media and the live feed, will now update to your mobile app and website, in just one click. Now, that was an exciting, uh, element for, for Anna, especially for wanting to reach that audience, meet everybody, you have a source of truth on the mobile app, but still have that opportunity to engage with everyone on social media with a consistent message. Sometimes, in a, in a meeting as well, you have somebody dump ashes into a dumpster, and start a fire, you have an emergency weather alert in town, you can immediately send out an email alert, and a push notification, all at that same time. Now, anybody who's downloaded the app and allowed notifications, can get that immediate or right on their phone. We also don't wanna hand over the keys of the kingdom to every employee, right, you can have as many users set up here in Thrill Share as you. Everyone will have, you need login, and you can set them up with just access to the areas they need to post on the page too. But now on that team member, has been wanting to share us some of my contact, pictures from Thursday, they can come in and submit that post, and it comes just waiting for a purple section. They're the admin, Molly or Anna, can come in, will get a notification, can get eyes on that post, make sure to go on the right platforms, catch the typo error, and then now, just one click, the approve button to publish that post. Empower the team, the, to make up those great elements of the city, to share their positive stories, their important updates, but you're always able to get eyes on that before something ever is published themselves. As a quick mention here, we're not all sitting behind a computer every second of the day, but you probably have your smartphone, so you can also post and update, send that important alert out, all from the Thrill Share mobile app. Can share that picture from an event everywhere, send that important update out immediately, all through a click from the phone. Thrill Share is made to be a one stop shop, right, and where both of the social media, so the mobile app, where community members are coming to visit every day, but the website is where people are still searching, and often that first touch point for the folks that are visiting, traveling through an area looking for that stop for town, for families looking at, moving to a new community, moving to a smaller community, somebody researching where they're gonna put them in development. So now that you're posting updates in Thrill Share, everything's also updated off the website. So this is the website we built for Cedar Hills, really clean, modern design, really easy to navigate, you have great images or a video to show, of course, looking at the city. We have a huge priority on ADA compliance, uh, we probably would not be working, um, with municipality in case all districts are crossing the boundary, we did not. So websites are built out to be fully compliant, there's also guard road and Thrill Share, and if you're pressing update to maintain compliance, and your local brand as well. And now they sold out, everything on the webpage, the event calendar, your live feed, positive stories, the news articles, documents, text reading, important forms, that's all updating at the same time, on your app and website, and you guys are only doing that once in Thrill Share. Whoever now is visiting, if I'm crossing the website, I can get changed to this, if I'm looking to visit, I can do great things from the live feed. You meet your audience consistently, but with dynamic updated message.
All right, we should probably move to questions, if you're comfortable with us moving there, I think we've probably seen what we need to see. Thank you. Does council have any questions about this?
I'm wondering about the cost.
So it, it comes in, and that's even why I had him come to the meeting, um, is that it actually comes in a little under what we're paying annually, but there would be a setup cost. Um, I know that in talking to Jones and DeMille about patching in what we need to meet legislation, there's also a cost associated with that annually, and also a setup fee that has, has a range to it, and so, it's, and really, we're getting a new URL, we have to move to dot gov, we can't be dot org anymore, we're getting an email platform, we're addressing all of these things right now, and we can, uh, we can keep going with what we have. I mean, there, the only sense of urgency is we're gonna have to do something to meet the legislation by September, which means we're gonna have to buy a product to, to almost like tack on to what we have, and Jones and DeMille doesn't do websites, we'd keep what we have with that subscription, we'd have to add another subscription, and then we'd have to add another setup fee. So really, just vetting it is, is more what I'm about, if we don't care about the citizen communication piece, and we don't care kind of about the whistles and bells.
Well, I think that's been the biggest concern that I have had, is the lack of communication, and I feel like we're communicating, we're communicating, but we're not, obviously, we're probably just not doing it in an effective way, that the public feels that we are effectively communicating.
It's, it's not user friendly either.
You know, um.
Exactly, it's gotta be easy to use, or it won't be used.
And I like this a lot better where you can, like, you had me at, um, when he first clicked that one, and it, he was going to an event, or whatever, the very first thing, and then he had to, it went to the webpage, and I was like, dude, I would have been out of there, and he said the same thing, like, you lost me, and I was like, yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking, you lost me. This seems very easy, it'd be easy for like, if Callie wanted to post something, you would just put it in there, and it would go, she wouldn't have to go to five different things, and, oh crap, I spelled that word wrong in this section, it, it just seems very easy, user friendly, like, I'm not, well, I am computer savvy, but it would be easy for me to use too. I think it'd be easy for any of this to use, but.
So Mayor, did I understand correctly, you said it would be, cost less than what we have now?
Than the annual is, but then we would have to pay a setup fee, and so, we'd have to budget for a setup fee for it. I talked to Dan about it after we talked to Jones and DeMille today, and, because Callie had said, why are you bringing this to the meeting? And, you know, I wanna help everyone understand why I wanted to bring this to the meeting. I don't wanna keep working on this stuff if we don't really, you know, we're just like, we're good where we are, we'll just stick with doing what we do. Um, Anna's had a hard time getting updates done, had a hard time working with and talking to our current provider, uh, they've told us they're pretty backlog, and, and things like that, so I feel like we're out of place, if we wanted to do something, we could do it now, because we have to add something on with Jones and DeMille.
Okay, so, um, another question I have with the website, adding it or building it into the website, is that like an additional portion? Or does that just come all?
It's the package.
You know, is, is it part of the package?
It's the package, it's the initial fee.
Yes, it's the package, and that's the other thing, is when I said to Jones and DeMille, well, could you also build us a website, since you have to do this other stuff, and they're like, we don't do websites, like, you'd have to find a website provider, so now.
So what is Jones and DeMille going to do for us?
They're creating, um, all of the required, and Larry, you might be able to speak to this better, but it has to be done by September. Do you wanna come up and say what we have to have done, and it doesn't work with our current website, so it has to be an additional product that we find somewhere and attach it to, to be in compliance.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Oh, and Dan had to leave, so just to excuse Dan, they're having.
So are we talking about the rewrite from the, of the subdivision code?
Yes, mm-hmm.
Okay, so, by the end of the year, um, well, we've already entered into a contract with the, uh, Hanson Group to rewrite our subdivision code, and that has to be done by the end of the year.
Okay.
And so, I'm guessing that what we're talking about now is we have to have this capability, oh, yes, we have to have certain capability in this subdivision code, there are requirements that the state says you have to provide this to the developers, and that to the developers, and, and so they have to be go on, be able to go online and find these things easily.
Oh, I was like, how in the crap is this gonna circle around to rewriting the subdivision code? I was lost for like two, two seconds, okay.
Yeah, that's it.
So that, I mean, just to turn this stuff there.
That makes sense.
But that's the end of twenty four, this year.
Yeah.
The end of this year.
That's correct.
So for them to do that, it's gonna cost, just numbers, twelve hundred or something, and then somewhere between twenty-five hundred and four thousand for us to, for them to, um, do the different things they need to do, to even connect it to what we already have. So then it starts to open up to, then we're gonna have this cobbled together thing, where they're gonna click on this, it's gonna take them out of the website, it's gonna take them over to here, um, and then we're still having a conversation with how we're gonna communicate better with the, the public, you know, even the Panguich Dam, I mean, things like this, people are looking around on heroin uncensored, you know? Like, that's kind of becoming our platform.
It really is.
It's kind of not a great platform for positive communication.
It's not, it's like, and it's not accurate information.
Or public service announcements kinds of information.
Yeah.
So that's what brought us to this meeting today, and, and then, you know, of course, it's a whole deal of, like, if we're gonna do this, it, it can't just be, it's not administrative, because in all likelihood, to switch over, we're gonna have to do a budget adjustment, but then, if it didn't cost anything to do the setup, I'm like, Sloan, can you just waive the setup, and then we can just make this administrative? It's like, no, you have to pay us to do the setup. Jones and.
Oh, come on, Sloan.
If we have to go to another provider, they'll pay, you know, charge us to build our website, and, you know, unless you guys have intel and can just get someone to do it for us for free. Um, so anyway, that's kind of why we're here at this meeting tonight, is deciding, because we've gotta be moving on this, like, we have to be making decisions, making those migrations, doing those things with what we're gonna do, and if we can bring it in under what we're paying, you know, we could, as a council, just say that's part of what we're doing, it's administrative decision, but because we're gonna have to build something new, I'm thinking, why wouldn't we also bring in this community engagement tool, and then have the really easy way to do the updates, the alerts, I mean, to me, it's even more than, yeah, it's nice, and a farmer's market, and there's fun things going on, it's like, if we really did need to do emergency alerting, yes, we have, we have, but there's a lot.
And it's, and it's very user friendly.
If it's user friendly, I'm all for it.
Right, if you could look this up on your smartphone, or, no, he doesn't have a flip phone, he has a real phone.
I'm.
How long would it take it to, to put something up?
How, if we said we want to do this, how long would it take for us to get built in online with things?
Yeah, that's with, that's the long time development, which, we do have a great discount for you guys in place for this time of year, fast, and, you know, try to get ahead of our busy season, but we get closer to everybody making that last change. Um, but, from signing an agreement to flipping the switching online, that total timeline is usually sixty to ninety days, on average.
Okay.
Two to three months.
Two to three, maybe, but how we've done that is that we have a team of thirty-five human being engineers here in our home base, who handle all data migration, that's their job, and will actually put hands on everything, and moving it over, um, looking for, um, ADA compliance, for links that are working, and if there's a document, a PDF that's been up there for nine years, that's something we're gonna invite you guys, doing all the nitty gritty of the, while we collaborate with the team on building out a great looking app for website.
So where are you based out of?
Yeah.
Sloan.
We would actually, in New Year.
So you have a good support group, sys, base system?
We probably have to pay the startup before.
Well, I just asked if you have a good support system, you know?
You have good customer service and support.
Customer service, yeah.
Yeah, and that is where we, we take a different approach as well, and I think if you talk to so much community we work with in, in Utah, and with anybody we partner with, that's the biggest thing you'll hear is, uh, our, our training and support. And for, for starters, that's all included in your annual cost, is unlimited to you guys, we have, uh, you'll have a client success manager at the Zoom, who's a long-term partner, who will hold a monthly meeting to look at what we're posting, things like ADA compliance, that also provides training for anyone dated on the team, a new team member in the middle of the year, somebody needing a brush up, you have their contact, can always reach out directly, give them a ring on their cell, but then on the support side, you also have, uh, a unlimited support through Thrill Share, with the chat button that you may have seen, can get a real talk from a real human being, in typically under sixty seconds, and our average is all time for any issue is under fifteen.
So you have a real human being, I heard you say that, right?
Uh, we have someone at the podium, so I'm gonna let him speak, so he doesn't stand there forever.
So I, I'm not sure if I understand all this, but is, so is this platform, is the intent is that it's two-way communication with the citizens?
It wouldn't be open for comments, um, I mean, that's not by design the way it's designed.
Okay, and the other question I have is, is, you, we'll still have a website, that if you're at home and you're working on a computer, that you'll still have access that way?
Yeah, you said that they would even do the website, is that what I'm understanding, that you will do our website for us?
Yes, we will build and host the website as well, and then you're updating consistently from one place to Thrill Share.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
It does.
Yeah, I like it. Callie, you were gonna say something. Callie, you were gonna say something.
I was just gonna mention that, um, if we move to this, he said it would take sixty to ninety days, we, we would have to give sixty days notice to Civic Plus, that we don't wanna go with them anymore. And I was just thinking the timing was good on that. I did have a question, um, can you, can you put the city ordinances on the website, and if so, can we self-codify those ordinances?
Codify?
You can upload those ordinances in document style, you can upload, we don't have codification in-house, and a big part of that, there's a lot of tools that people use, um, that for the community, so work with a lot of partners who use a codification tool that's, um, is better than linked and accessible, but the documents themselves can be uploaded, that's a moment to you guys, comes from one place, and then is accessible to anybody on the website or the mobile app, we'll see that same document, just from one place.
So, Callie, are you asking if we make a change to our ordinance, can we update the change on the ordinances that are posted on the website?
Well, will our code be on the website, like?
Yeah, so like, if you go, and I had him send me through that, 'cause I said that's our biggest concern, is, is everything that we have gonna be able to be on there, along with what's required by the upcoming legislation, that we have to also have on by the end of the year?
Right.
Can that all be on this, and, you know, the way it's built? And so we, I mean, we could go back and look at Brigham City, or Cedar Hills, or something, and look at the way their code's online, but it looked very similar. I mean, there are a lot of things about it that just look the same, more or less, kind of the document side of it looked very similar, but, um, and, and, you know, again, we're not making a decision tonight or anything, I'm just exposing you guys to this and saying, do we wanna keep looking into this, and, and if we wanna do this, then we are gonna have to make some budget adjustments for the setup side. But then annually, we'll be able to be a little less.
I think...
And then if you add on Jones and DeMille's product to what we're already paying, well, you know, it makes up a, quite a bit of the difference of the setup fee, so...
I think we need to pursue it.
Can we bring it back to an action item?
We can bring it back, and that'll give, and he'll share his contact, I mean, I can send you the city council email address and share his con- uh, contact, and you guys can talk to him, he's a very available to set Zoom meetings and things, and, I mean, I've, how many times have I talked to you, maybe like two or three? And so just talk to him about any questions you have, look around on the other sides, Callie, of course, you know, just pick all over that, and just see if you see any issues or things that you wanna really take a deep dive into. But we don't have to do that in tonight's meeting, this is the last item on our agenda.
No, but if you'll give him our contact information, and if you'll send us some, like, um, communities like Brigham City that you already do, that, so just I can look through them, and I'm sure others might wanna look through those and just see how...
And if our staff has contacts in those cities, call that, their staff, and say, do you, do you like this, how are they with customer service, you know, or do you see any problems with the tools, things like that? That would help me a ton, 'cause I don't, we have different roles, so, yeah.
People, you have different contacts, and...
And different contacts, too.
I think we need to move forward and look into it more.
Mm-hmm. Me, too.
Yeah, let's bring it back.
Okay, we'll bring it back on the twenty-fifth. Okay, and in the meantime, we'll do some research.
Yeah.
You'll be hearing from some of us.
(laugh)
Okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't hesitate to reach out, in the meantime, and I'll, uh, share some of those examples with you. Thanks so much.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, good night.
Good night.
Late, it's late in our council.
Late.
Nine thirty.
All right, we're gonna move into updates from council members, and I don't remember which side I started on last time, so we'll just start with, um, since Rochelle's over there doing, doing the computer, we'll start with council member Burton. Do you have any updates for us this evening?
Uh, yeah, the water board met last night, and, uh, basically, it was, uh, they didn't want to, uh, address the recommendation on the PMC, uh, that, that's the, uh, well, the state's gonna reimburse people for taking out landscaping and converting green areas to zero scape and all that, and so it's gotta go through, the water board was supposed to do a recommendation, then go to the planning and zoning, and then after it goes, and we come up with some ordinance, and it'll come back to the city council, because as we discussed, there's certain criteria that has to be met and put into ordinance that we talked about before, and, uh, so anyway, that'll be ongoing, and it'll, you know, with the planning and zoning and the water board, and, uh, and we had kind of a, with the water board, just a refresher, uh, discussion on the groundwater management plan, and, um, oh, that was in the culinary, and then, uh, let's see, um, the, I guess as far as the pressurized irrigation, as you know, that the water's still coming on, on the seventeenth, which is Tuesday, the irrigation water, and, um, the Dry Canyon project, uh, it's, we're waiting on BLM, they dropped the ball, they didn't do their, their EIS and their NEPA, they, we thought they were working on it, found out they weren't, so we're trying to put pressure on them to get that done. And then the, you know, the recharge project, we met with the, uh, water-related, we met with the, the engineers alpha, and they're working to try and get design and things progressing as far as that recharge project. So that's kind of a highlight of, I guess, the water, planning and zoning. Maybe as a side note to water, I think Panguish is optimist- pessim- or optimistically, cautiously optimistic right now. I think things are, are stabilizing there with that dam and, uh, on the Panguish Lake, so they've had to release a lot of water and do a lot of, you know, ice breaking and things, but I think they're gonna be okay. Uh, the planning and zoning, uh, we talked, uh, they discussed the Terribles Building Permit Review for the one here at Exit Seventy-Eight, and, um, and just had a discussion on rezoning some areas out by in that, uh, Heritage Hills area for the smaller lots that were originally, you know, uh, applied for, and so there was just a discussion, there wasn't anything done there. And then there's a lot lengthy discussion on a construction project on One Fifty-Five North, Five Hundred West, and, uh, so that's gonna come back, I think. And then, there are a lot of discussion on your accessory dwelling units and definitions of single family, you know, trying to come up with some definitions, and, uh, and then discussion about the subdivision land use authority, which, as we're going to have to have that board organized, however it's composed, whatever you decide, uh, that board's gonna have to be, isn't it by the end of the year, Larry? That subdivision?
It's in conjunction with this rewrite that we're having done of Title Fourteen.
Yeah, but it has to be done by the end of the year, doesn't it?
Yes, by the end of the year.
Yeah.
So the dates coincide, but we need to have that figured out, how we're gonna do it, so they can get it into the code.
Right. How it's gonna be composed, of what composition on that part.
Yes.
Yeah, so, okay, and then, uh, the county, one thing that might be of interest of the county is that they're, uh, talking about, they're getting a grant for Phase Two of the five-mile, you know, recon- reconstruction up there, so that's something that we'll want to keep up on and, and follow, so I think that's all I have for right now, thank you.
Thank you.
I had the kickoff meeting with the patchwork Parkway Byway. Said it correctly, didn't I? It's a mouthful.
So happy you were there, it was great.
And they're going to do some, um, constructing of additional panels and replacement of the panels, depending on weather, if, you know, whatever, and it's going all the way from down over by KB's to Lions Park, to Forbay, to Yankee, to Hidden Haven, to Bryanhead, to Mammoth Creek, I'm going fast, can you tell? Panguish Lake and Panguish West, which I can't remember where that was.
It's pretty, pretty solid.
But, and Panguish Garfield, uh, Fairgrounds.
That the original quilt walkers wish they could've done that fast.
If I was in charge of it, they would've.
(laugh)
And so explain what, do you mean when you say the panels?
So the, they have, you know, the long panels, or they have the small panels on, on pipes, I guess you wanna put that, and they're gonna either put new ones up, double-sided, explain more, they, like, when they go up, is it Hidden Haven?
Mm-hmm.
They're gonna talk more about the vegetation and the flooding and, and they're gonna do a lot of the history that's gone through there, and I can't remember how to say it, maybe you will, Molly, mes- messia?
It's French, Scott can probably say it. Messim- messime or...
It's one, mes- messia?
Uh, landmark, monument, where they, the symphony wrote a piece about Parowan.
Messia?
Yeah, but you've heard Nancy always talk about it.
I'm butchering it really bad, I can tell.
I'm speaking into the microphone, I want you all to know.
(laugh)
We are proud.
I was gonna sing, but I'm not going to. Um, yes, that's how you say it.
Okay. And they're gonna put that up at Hidden, Hidden Haven to tell the story more.
'Cause right now, it's kinda buried, and nobody knows where it is, and it's really cool.
Yeah, yeah. So, and, I mean, a lot of this was even new to me for it, so...
And our Parowan entry signs that, that are kinda faded and peeling.
There's been, there's been a lot fading because of the weather, the sun and all that, so they're gonna replace those, and...
Was that the White Ledges, or at Hidden Haven? That, well, however you say it.
It's in, it's in the White Ledge area, but they wanna, because it's an area that just keeps getting nailed, they wanna move it to a place where it gets seen, it's a little more protected.
See more.
It's kinda arbitrarily put up in a way, so...
Can't say it, I can take you where the original plaque is, but I can't say it.
I can't either, messia or messia, or, anyhow, that's, that's it.
Perfect, thank you, it was great.
Um, I attended the shade tree committee meeting last week, Beaver Landscaping will be, uh, treating, treating the trees this month, uh, they have that all mapped out, and what trees they're gonna be treating. Uh, we're talked, talked about, and we're looking at a urban forestry grant that's available until July first, and this, you know, we discussed it at the meeting, that it could be possibly benefit, uh, the need for trees and shrubs for, uh, to cut down the wind on the future pickleball courts, uh, so hopefully we'll find someone to assist us, uh, in writing that grant. Uh, there's a lot of money that was mentioned, that was part of that grant. Um, and then Arbor Day will be April twenty-ninth at twelve-thirty at, uh, the Library Park, and, let's see, spent yesterday being part of a interviewing, interviewing, uh, sev- seven highly qualified, uh, candidates for Public Work Director. Oh, sorry.
I don't know if you can hear me.
That's it. Did you hear that? Okay.
Seven candidates?
Seven, yeah.
Okay. Did you say Arbor Day's twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth, twelve-thirty at Liberty Park, or Library Park, Liberty.
Liberty.
Sorry.
Liberty and Library, same thing.
Wrong city.
(laugh) Thank you.
(laugh)
Well, we almost had an airport board meeting, but that didn't happen, and other than that, my life was not very eventful with city stuff.
But it was. Um, Dave Harris and I attended a meeting, was it yesterday? I don't even know, my whole week is like all run together. Um, we had a meeting with, um, Public Works, uh, I think it was Coe, Coe Evans was there, Matt Rhodes with UDOT, the mayor.
Larry Pendleton.
Yeah, Larry Pendleton, Dan Jessen, you and I, um, about putting in a sidewalk from the Grace Christian Church down to the Maple Springs subdivision, so basically Larry Pendleton's whole field. Um, we're getting a lot of calls, a lot of stuff on the safety, or the lack of safety kids getting to and from that subdivision, and it really is busy, especially if we're gonna be putting in that Terribles and the hotel and RV Park, it's just, it's gonna get busier, so...
And Larry Pendleton did say the utilities look good.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the utilities and the sewer, all that stuff look good, so, um, I didn't attend the field trip that they did, but, um, I did attend the meeting, and everybody is positive, wants to get this done, and so it's great, it's gonna be good to see it happen. Um, if you guys have noticed, I think I see it more because I work at the school, but construction has started, uh, for the new multipurpose building in between the elementary and the high school. Um, I just wanna thank our community for being patient with the new, and the parents of schoolchildren, just being patient with the new route, the drop-off and pickup, it's different, changes hard, but just know that the top priority is the safety of your students. Like, we don't want the reasons, the why they decided to do it the way that they want, they just don't want ki- kids to get run over, like, there is a clear safety concern, and those are being addressed. Also, I wish Addie was still here, um, his police officers have been amazing this week. They are out there every morning, um, at the two new sections where the drop-off is down the side, I don't know north, south, east, west, so the other side of the school, where we have made it into, um, a one-way street. Um, that was hard for parents to grasp, um, but today, there were like no issues, it was just, it seemed very seamless, but our police officers do need a pat on the back, they've been out there, um, it's been great, I've been doing the crosswalk down on that bottom, um, I think with Chief Adams yesterday, it was great, I love seeing them, and it's, it's been fun, so just be cautious that that's gonna take one year to complete-ish, maybe longer, hopefully not longer, but, um, some of the concerns that I've been hearing is why couldn't they have started after school got out? I don't know, I'm not their company, (laugh) you know, it's just the right time to start, um...
Like, what does it matter, really?
I mean, well, it is, I mean, there is some heartache, 'cause it's taking up parking, and the school is limited on parking as well. Um, I do need to talk to the mayor and to Dan about some concerns about some other things, um, that hopefully the city can address.
With the route?
Well, not really with the route, but with, um, (sigh) with some things that are overflowing into the parking lot of where staff need to be parking. I don't wanna throw this person under the bus, but there are some concerns that need to still be addressed, because we're shortened, they're shortened parking over there and stuff, too, so there's some things that the city probably needs to address. Um, but other than that, um, I was going to have a theater board meeting this week, but it got rescheduled till next week, because they need to vote on presidents and stuff, and the major, like, nobody could come, so it got canceled short notice, but it is set for next Tuesday at five o'clock, same place, same time, and that's all I got.
Great, I think this has never happened, but all of you covered everything on my update list, so we are good.